All right. Welcome to the regular evening meeting of council. And do I have an adoption of the agenda? Do I have a motion? Councilor Ferguson, do I have a second or for the, Councilor Kunst? And now to be one, the adoption of the minutes. Or sorry, I guess we'll vote, all those in favor of the agenda carried. And now for the adoption of minutes, do I have a mover? Councilor Ferguson, second or Councilor Arnison, all in favor and carried. All right, well, thank you very much for coming out this evening. And it is my pleasure this evening to welcome you and to honor the North Langley Kodiaks Midget Football Team, which are sitting here right in front of us. Thanks for coming on on a snowy night. This team won the British Columbia Community Football Association Provincial Championships for the second year in a row on December 2nd in Coquitlam. It'll be round for them. Nice job. This is a tremendous accomplishment and a perfect finish to a fantastic year for these hardworking young players. The Kodiaks went undefeated for the entire season, winning all 11 of their games. You should be very proud of your achievements, we certainly are. And congratulations to all the players of the Langley Kodiaks Midget Football Team, and thanks to you coaches and managers and trainers whose commitment and effort has clearly paid off. The Kodiaks sent, set an exemplary example for athletes of all ages in our community, and we're thrilled to see you named the best in B.C. So we're going to come up and give you some certificates, and so when I call your name, you can come up and collect your certificate, and then we're going to do a team picture. All right? So we'll come up there. Councilor Kunst, do you want to maybe help me?
Oh, you can. No. Okay. So this is what we think we have here. So Caleb Caribou, come on up and take your hand off. Congratulations. You just stand right over there and we'll get a team picture at the end. Jesse Nielsen, number two. Garnet Hurley, number 21. I'm supposed to read the numbers, football players like that. Timothy Genk, Genk, sorry. Number 24. Joshua Fletcher, he's not here, but he was 28. Wesley Bag, number 47. Eric Hawkins, number 62. Zach Rohan, number 65. Stand here, well, maybe if we could double line there, move over a little bit there, all these wide shoulders. Mitch Ray, number 70, he's not here. And we have Chad Henderson, head coach. Move over. Joseph Alock, coach. Just in naked, okay? Kirk Jones, coach. He's working. Pardon? Who've you got? Sergio Yarwood. Okay. You guys have a big coaching staff. Kara Hawkins. Are we back to beginning? Okay. Have we got everybody here? Mark Wood, come on up, Mark. I don't know if we have. Marcus Noel, come on up. Okay, so we're going to try and get a picture in here. Is everybody here? All right, so I'm the smallest guy. Are you sure? I think we're probably meeting. Now, here's our, are we able to all get in here? Just maybe two, why am I have to double off a little here? Can you have a, why do you? Okay. Okay, good job. Congratulations. Thank you.
Okay, thanks very much. We have, we'll move on to delegations. We have five delegations tonight, and we'll have our first delegation up is Melissa Giles. And when you come up, if you wouldn't mind just telling us your name for the record and where you live, and then you'll have five minutes to present, after which there may be some questions from council.
First of all, thank you for having me here this evening. My name is Melissa Giles. I live in Walnut Grove. I work in Abbotsford, and I work for an organization called MCC. And why I've come here this evening is I just want to make you aware of an event that is happening next Tuesday, February 19th, and it's actually going to be hosted right here in Langley. I sent in a one pager, so hopefully they'll be able to pull it up for you. But the, what I want to talk to you about is, we're going to be hosting a rent bank forum, and this is going to be a collection of people from all across the province who are providing this service in our community. For those of you who haven't heard about rent banks before, rent banks essentially provide interest-free loans to low-income households who face eviction as a result of a short-term financial crisis. As we know, the housing situation is dire for many people, and the efforts to keep people housed is essential. Rent banks have demonstrated that they are an effective measure in homelessness prevention and in providing housing stability for those that are at risk of losing their homes. Currently, there are eight bank, rent banks being provided throughout the province, and so if you're able to participate that day, which we hope you're able to, it will be a mixture of presentations, networking, resource sharing, and dialogue. The day will be spent with guest speakers such as MLA Spencer Herbert Chandler, who was recently part of the Housing Task Force and made 23 recommendations to the provincial government. Number four on that list was that provincial rent banks, that rent banks are funded from a provincial level. In addition, we're going to have partnership discussions and the model being spoken to us from New Westminster. As in that city, the municipality, credit unions, and service providers have come together in order to provide rent banks in the city. As well, you'll hear from each of the rent bank providers themselves, as they'll share with you some of their successes, their challenges, and the impacts of their, what they're doing in their community. And as addition to that, we'll have Van City, who's recently done an in-depth report and research project on the impact of rent banks in these communities. So the details unfortunately aren't up above. Do you mind if I click on it? So this is the details that you see in front of you. My email address is located there. If you're able to contact me in the next couple of days, I'll be able to send the registration page to you. We're hoping to confirm our numbers by this Friday, just as far as catering goes. So I want to thank you for this opportunity, and I want to ask if you, possible, that you would participate with us next week, as we have council members coming from Chilliwack, from Abbotsford, and from New Westminster as well. So thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you very much, and there are no questions. So thank you. Okay, our next delegation is Phil Mcnally. Mcnally, sorry.
That's fine.
And you can, we got Phil Mcnally, just tell us where you live and then you're ready to roll.
Sure, I'm Phil Mcnally. I'm at number 17, 21704, 96th Avenue in Langley here.
Thank you.
For the past nine years, since relocating my family to the Walnut Grove community, I have advocated for a safer means of pedestrian travel through my community. I am appreciative to learn that after raising my concerns over these past years, a new pedestrian walkway located on the north end of 216th Street near 95th Avenue is included in the budget for this year. While I see this as a small victory, I'm not losing sight of the end goal. The goal is to ensure we have a strengthened plan in place for safer pedestrian travel along 216th Street prior to the opening of the 216th Street interchange. By now, many members of council are aware of our concerns related to 216th Street interchange, truck route designation or re-designation, speed abatement, health and safety concerns, among other items that have previously been brought before past councils. On December 18th, four of us who live in Walnut Grove near the new interchange met with two members of the Engineering Department of the Township of Langley to discuss safety concerns and possible solutions for our neighborhood. I was invited to take part of these discussions by staff in order to address some of the concerns I had raised in recent emails to the Township and council. This delegation is a direct result of that meeting. Our community is unique in the lower mainland because we have two elementary schools located along 216th Street in our residential area that are also located within one and a half kilometers of the new interchange. It is safe to say that given today's planning sensibilities, no one would propose that elementary school should be built along a high-volume and high-polluting road. Langley Township has participated in creating this situation, and it is up to the Langley Township to ensure the safety of the kids and families who attend these schools, as well as play in the parks, utilize the trails, and the community garden all along 216th Street are provided with safe means. We are encouraged by the fact that the Township of Langley staff in the meeting said that safety was a priority. We were also reassured that they said that they were looking for a complete street model, and that was something that the township is trying to implement throughout the municipality. We want our street to be a safe one and a complete street. A complete street is one where we have all modes of transportation, walking, biking, transit, and vehicle traffic all accommodated. Given that we have two elementary schools and public parks along this road, vehicle traffic cannot be the priority regardless of whether the road connects to an interchange or not. To that end, we propose a number of changes that should be improved, or that should improve safety in our area that is already prone to speeding vehicles. I'm not going to get into details here because I've provided you with a PDF copy of this, but basically, we're looking for curb extensions to be located at 91st Avenue where Topham is located, that's one of the elementary schools, and also at an existing crosswalk at 88B Avenue. Corridor study should be implemented. We need to request a corridor study for 216th Street. Modi has planned this interchange without sufficient input for those who live in the north of the highway, and certainly without input of those who live outside the provincial right-of-way. The Township of Langley owns this 216th Street, but it is partially funded by TransLink. TransLink can certainly help along with ICBC and Modi in order to work for, work together for you guys to come up with some better safety planning. Warning lights and speed reductions, this is a big one to me. Township policies regarding arterial roads are not set in stone. 248th Street is a truck route, and it has a speed reduction zone at Otter Elementary. It is not the only such example in the Langley School District that this occurs. Township of Langley staff could not provide us with a definitive answer as to why this adjustment was made for Otter, and yet it is not allowed for Topham or the École de Voyageurs, both are on 216th Street. We're looking for some ways of curbing the speed along 216th Street prior to the opening of the interchange. I tend to feel that I'm a proactive person rather than a reactive person, so I'm a little bit concerned as to whether or not, once the interchange opens, the township then starts looking for a safer means of pedestrian travel throughout it. Okay? We'd like to see warning lights, like those near the Walnut Grove Recreation Center, maybe changing the light at 91st Avenue by Topham to a regular traffic light rather than a pedestrian-controlled one. Introducing speed control or speed reduction along, along 216th would also help. I'm certainly not an expert in this. The people that we talk with within our group were not engineers, were not an expert in road planning designations, traffic flow models, health impact assessments. However, I want to be an expert in protecting my most precious asset, which would be my family members, as well as members of my community. And I think that there's probably good ways of achieving this, so we respectfully request that you consider them and plan for the increase in vehicle traffic implementing the changes prior to the opening of the new interchange. I thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I have a question here from Councilor Woodward.
Yeah, you mentioned right at the start there that your end goal was, but I missed half of it, so you stated, you've stated a very clear end goal with your, with your efforts, so can you state it again for me very clearly, the end goal? It was in your presentation.
At the opening there?
Yeah.
The angle at which we're looking for is, we're looking for a speed reduction, safer means of travel for pedestrians within 216th Street community. Once the 216th Street interchange is opened up, probably, I think foreseeably in late 2019, 2020, I think that's sort of in the plans, the concern is vehicle traffic is just going to increase, and it's already a difficult zone in there anyways. I certainly invite any one of you to come to my community on 216th Street, anywhere between the hours of 2:00 and 7:00 o'clock on a Monday to Friday, and watch the cars racing up and down, heading to where they're going, coming home from work. My bigger concern would be if you've got vehicle traffic coming off of the number-one highway, coming in on 216th in the new interchange, it takes a little bit of time for people to maybe reduce down what their speed of travel would have been coming off the highway. Everybody's sort of used to that quick flow. You've got kids that are going to and from school, you know, families taking dogs for a walk and things like that. It's a difficult place to be crossing that street alone right now, let alone if we turn it into a four-lane highway and have cars traveling at high speeds. So I guess, you know, my number-one concern is pedestrian safety, along with making sure that people are able to get to where they need to go, be it on bikes, by car, by foot, things like that. Okay?
Councilor Ferguson.
Thank you very, very much for coming. I know that you folks and your neighbors and, and the people who live in the area have been very patient over the last few years. You've had a lot of challenges, as we all know. I'm glad to hear you're proceeding with what you're talking about. We've got some things in the budget, and, and we want to make sure that we can do everything in our power to help you. Obviously, when that interchange does indeed open, I think the enforcement's going to be things, there's a school in the area, there's other traffic matters and traffic commons that we're going to have to take into consideration, because the last thing you want is people speeding or using that as a roadway or speedway through your intersection. Do you have a group of, assigned group of people that are actually meeting with staff at this point in time?
No. I mean, there, we have a Google group that is sort of proactive in maintaining communication with Township staff, as well as hopefully councillors. If you looked at my, my name and my history, those of you that are retained from council from previous years, you may or may not have seen other letters that I've sent. I may or may not get responses back from you, depending on what's going on. Communication is key. We are really happy to be involved with the Township engineers and that. That's the only way I found out about the new pedestrian crossing that I've been advocating for, for nine years. I think the conundrum with all of this is proactivity rather than reactivity, and what we are getting from the engineers is unless we request it to be put into budget and put in motion, they're looking at a wait-and-see attitude. They want to see, well, let's do traffic models and things like that, see how much increased volume we have through there. I'm certainly, like I said, I'm not an expert, but I certainly know if I'm on the number-one highway, and there's a backup, and I have an exit to get off of that number-one highway to bypass portions of the backup, I'm going to come racing through as quick as I can, and if I see a quick four-lane road down to 96, and it's telling me I can take that to Golden Years, or cut back on onto 200 throughout 192, you know, that's options for me as a, as a worker, as a commuter that wants to. I lived for, for seven years in Chilliwack, and I used to commute to Burnaby every day. So if there was backups along those areas, you look for those options, and with today's technology, the options are readily available via GPSs and things like that, so. That's sort of my concern, is being proactive rather than reactive. Let's get this safety implemented first before the interchange opens. Otherwise, we're going to be dealing with more than a golden retriever dying on 216th Street. It's going to be a family member.
Thank you very much indeed for coming.
Councilor Richter.
Yes, thank you. And you had quite a list there, and I got some of them down about the warning lights, speed reductions in school, curbing speeds, regular traffic light, and so on. We are going into budget open house on the 20th and the 21st, I believe. Can you make sure that your list of items is submitted to that budget open house?
Absolutely.
So it will come back to council as priorities that the community would like to see in this budget that we're going to be passing.
Okay.
Great, thanks.
Okay, thank you. That's all the questions. Okay, we'll have our third delegation, Bill Massey.
Yeah, I'd like to thank you for this opportunity. My name is Bill Massey. I'm, I live in Walnut Grove. I'm also the president of the local riding association of the B.C. Green Party. I'd also like to meet Mitchell Nurse. Mitchell is a keen follower of transportation issues, and he's developed a background document which we've, we've tabled for your reference. As we all know, ride hailing is coming to B.C. The provincial government has passed enabling legislation, and then there's an all-party committee of MLAs that is working on the fine details of implementation. We don't know what riding, ride hailing will look like when it is implemented. The NDP government has developed a restrictive approach, which appears to focus on protecting the taxi industry. But now the Federal Competition Bureau has waded in and is urging the government to adopt a more open approach, more competitive, where prices and licenses would be set by the market. Also, the, the CEO of TransLink has, has presented similar advice. British Colombians have been waiting a long time for ride hailing, and it will be a welcome service, especially where taxi service is inadequate. But there are downsides to ride hailing as well. In cities around North America, ride hailing has put more cars on the road, increased congestion, and increased greenhouse gas emissions. It's also resulted in decreased transit use. Langley has a legacy of urban sprawl, where provision of affordable and convenient public transit is prohibitive. There is danger that without proper planning, ride hailing could undermine our public system and make transportation less affordable overall. If you asked me last week, I would have said this is aspect of ride hailing has not been on the radar of decision-makers. That was my sense, because the stories in the, in the media have mostly been about the impact on the taxi industry. But I was very pleased when I received a response from Mayor Froze's office to a query I sent him a few weeks ago on this topic. I was informed that, that the mayor's council has been talking about this issue and is looking for ways to plan so that ride hailing is a complement to our public transit system. So we're here this evening because we would like to start the conversation on how we can implement ride hailing here in Langley in a positive way. No doubt this will require action at the regional and provincial levels, but Langley would be much more effective at the mayor's council and above if we have a vision of how we would like to proceed here in Langley. The challenge will be to make public transit affordable and convenient so that it can compete with ride hailing. Vancouver recently passed a motion to make transit free for young people, and I imagine that'll be before the mayor's council soon. Does Langley have a view on that, on that issue? But there's lots of bold ideas out there, too. For instance, Belleville, Ontario is piloting a system of ride hailing for, for their bus service. Instead of fixed routes, their buses have a computer-generated route based on hails by customers. The buses take the most direct route to the stops where somebody is waiting. This might work well for some routes in Langley, where our buses travel long routes, passing many stops where nobody is getting on or off. We need a conversation here in Langley to ensure that ride hailing will be a positive addition to our transportation options. We want to see ride hailing come to Langley without increased congestion on our roads and without adding greenhouse gas emissions, and we want it to complement our public transit system. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I have a question from Councilor Arnison.
Yes, thank you very much for coming. It's interesting, and I know you've done some due diligence and research about this model. I've discovered the same thing myself in a very cursory manner. I, I assume that we should not all consider that this is some kind of panacea to the transportation issues that we have, because Uber itself creates other challenges, such as single occupancy vehicles potentially continuing to congest the road, at the same time actually reducing the number of users for transit. So that is a bit of a conundrum. However, I, I really would like to underline what you were saying about its complementary use to what we currently have, because I was looking at models where they're now studying the connectivity that can be created by larger transit modes, and then you have an opportunity to connect your trip locally with an Uber vehicle, for example. So I think there's many things to consider, but like other policies, you need to take a multi-pronged approach to consider what the implications are before you start to do the uptake on that. So it's a good interim period, I feel. We've been discussing Uber for quite some time, but I think it's also very helpful to know that our local representatives are looking into that and looking at it as a regional issue as well, so that we can be sure that we're not creating these unintended consequences. So thank you very much for coming.
Thank you. Councilor Richter.
Yes, thank you as well. You note here that we need to have a vision of how ride shaling, ride hailing can be implemented while mitigating the negative consequences, and that what you'd really like to see is a conversation in Langley about ride hailing. So have you thought of organizing a forum or approaching a community association to work with them to organize a forum on it?
We haven't done anything like that yet, but surely that would be something that would be a good, we hope we, we get some leadership from council, too, on something like that, yeah.
Yeah, so, but are you asking council to organize a forum, or?
Well, what we're doing here today is just starting the conversation, and, yeah, and we, we would work with any kind of process that, you know, that would address these kind of issues and come to some kind of vision for Langley. I think it's quite important, yeah.
Great, thank you very much.
Thank you. There's no more questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Our fourth delegation is from the Valley Ball Hockey Association. Do you would just provide your name and where you live, and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Craig McDougall. I live in Brookswood up in Langley, and been living there actually for 49 years, and so I'm proud to say I'm a Langley resident for my whole life. Now, I'm here speaking on behalf of Valley Ball Hockey, excuse me. Did you have the video that I asked you to play? Okay, I apologize. There was a video. Okay, I apologize. There was a video that I brought out that was supposed to be up on the screen, but it's not going to be here today. So I'll go without it, and we're okay with that. So I'm here representing Valley Ball Hockey Association. We are a nonprofit association driven about supporting youth and minors in the city of Langley, the township of Langley, and across the Fraser Valley. We have over 1,200 players that are in our association. They range between the ages of five and 18. And we've actually called George Preston our home for our games, our gold medal games, and a lot of other events that we host there. Now, in our association, we have over 75 volunteer coaches plus assistant coaches. We have over 150 in total where it comes to coaches and volunteers. We have about 12 of us on our board of directors, and all of us volunteer our time to support the children and get the kids out there to get them out playing sports. We have a motto that we believe that all children should have an opportunity to play sports, regardless if it's soccer, if it's hockey, if it's ice hockey, ball hockey, lacrosse, doesn't matter what it is. And with our association, it doesn't matter what walk of life you come from. Doesn't matter if you can afford it or you can't afford it. We open our doors to every child and give everybody opportunity to play. Now, we've been in the Langley township for close to 30 years. We've been promoting our sport. And with our support of the community, we have kids that come from all walks of life. We have, believe it or not, even councillors' children that have played for us in the past or currently now. We have just kids from all walks of life, from, we're supported from local real estate agents to local communities to big organizations that support us as well, too. Now, Valley Ball Hockey, what we try to do is we try to make sure that what we provide to the families and the children of the Langley township is a quality sport. And one of the big things about that is we've always been known as an indoor sport, playing inside hockey arenas. And so we've always relied on the township to be able to provide us this space and this opportunity for us to be able to play our game. And recently, there's been a couple of rumblings about perhaps maybe this sport should be played outdoors, or played out in a different type of an environment. And it's never been that case for 30 years that we've had our association together. Now, our Valley Ball Hockey Association, we have over 1,200 players that play in our association. There's over 1,000 in Vancouver. There's 800 in Victoria. There's another 800 in Maple Ridge. All of these kids that come out and play, every one of these associations play indoors in a hockey arena. So the arenas that have been supplied to us over the years, whether it be George Preston, whether it be the Alder Grove Rink, which was the old one, which is now converting over to the new one, the kids have all grown up knowing that they're playing hockey inside a rink. And our association and our sport is known as a spring sporting association. Now, when we use this floor time for Valley Ball Hockey, I'm sure there's a lot of thought around how much revenue is generated or how much goes out. We try to keep our fees as low as possible as we can. We are one of the least expensive sports that are out there, and yet we provide as much as we possibly can to the kids and to the families. Now, with that, we obviously rent floor space or dry floor space off the township. And we average probably close to 40, between $40,000 and $50,000 a year, we pay to the township to use this dry floor space. And I think over the past five years, it's been close to $200,000 that we've tried to put in towards. Now, what we've recently discovered is, at a very short notice in our planning of our stages, we were given notice that George Preston is going to be keeping ice in for the term of spring. Now, we rely on George Preston. We rely on the township to be able to provide the kids what we promised them. And we did not give, we were not given ample enough time to be able to prepare for this change to come into play. Now, generally speaking, it'd be nice to have a large amount of time, whether it be 12 months, or six months, or whatever it is. We were given three months' notice. We were already in the middle of our registration. We had 1,000 kids already signed up for our association when we were given notice in the middle of January, saying, "Sorry, you're not going to be able to use George Preston this year." Now, that was very damaging to us, and we're still trying to recover and still trying to figure out what we're going to do about it. And so the option that we've been given is, potentially what we'll do is, we will allow you to play in the outdoor rink that was built beside George Preston. And I appreciate that thought. And one of the things about it is, we actually played practices in the George Preston outdoor rink last year to see what it was like. Unfortunately, the design of the building did not stand up to what we need for playing hockey games inside there. There are many deficiencies with the building of that. And we unfortunately, and other supporting associations as well, were never consulted with the design, the recommendations, or anything on this building that was built. Now, don't get me wrong, I think it's a beautiful building. So whoever was involved with building it, that's a great idea, but it does not hold up standards to what we need it to. It doesn't have glass to be able to play hockey.
Thank you. Your five minutes is up, so if you want to wrap up quickly, or we can begin asking questions, I do have some from council.
Okay, I'll just wrap. One quick one. We, Valley Ball Hockey, would love the support of council to please revisit this decision to keep ice in George Preston, and reverse that decision to allow us time to plan and prep for the next season.
Okay, thank you very much. We have a long list of questions. So we'll start off with Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you, Craig, for coming, and your team. Housekeeping first. I did bring a Valley jersey and some hats and
Thank you very much.
The B.C. team, the Valley team, and Western Canada Cup. All the medals are down below as well, so that's a little bit of housekeeping. I see a lot of familiar faces and some young people as well that I don't know. But, you know, I understand in ball hockey, it's affordable. It's something you guys, nothing succeeds like success. I remember there was just a few hundred kids playing, and now you're way up there. And my first question, you have, Abbotsford's been in for a while, right? That's why we call it Valley.
Yes.
Where at one time, they were kind of running their own show, and it didn't go very well. And I know that you have floor time, or whatever you call it, in Abbotsford, right?
Yes, we do.
And, you know, I wouldn't expect somebody to always drive from, you know, Brookswood out to Abbotsford, although we've done it, you know. The second thing is, I'm not very familiar with the new box at George Preston. We used to do a lot of practicing at MAP. The younger kids can play. Sometimes they can split the floor space. There's all, you know, they're five-year-olds, right? It's a lot different. But when you start getting them more competitive, and also the rep teams and the national teams, it's a little bit different. So I know you like to play inside. Certainly, the growing pains now with Alder Grove, right, where we used to play the Alder Grove Arena all the time, practices, training, tryouts, all those things were there. You know, and she also talked about, you know, being an indoor, outdoor. I mean, there's some things with these new particular surfaces you can actually do. Some things outdoors, but you want your big games, your jamborees and all that other stuff indoors where the parents can come. And, you know, the older the kids come, the less parents come. But anyway, I still think we should, you know, sit down with our staff, work things out, try to look on some solutions. As I say, this year has been some growing pains, and I think, you know, we don't want to throw the baby out with the bathwater. But sit down, let's fix some of these things that need to be fixed, and let's, you know, find the
Counselor, please just questions, too, rather than personal statements.
I appreciate what he said there. And I actually heard a couple of questions that I'm going to pull out of there if I'm okay. I know he was talking about, we do have actually players that come from Abbotsford to play in our association. And I was asked at one point in time, with 1,200 players in our association, how many are actually from Langley? Or how many are from Abbotsford? Or how many are from wherever else? We have, on average, 80% to 85% of our players come out of the Langley city area. The other 10% come out from the Abbotsford area, and we pull them into Langley to be able to play in our fabulous city and township. And we have a very small percentage that, believe it or not, these kids will drive all the way from Chilliwack to come in to play for our association, because we've made such a name for ourselves. So we do support other areas. We do go out and play in the occasional game out in Abbotsford, but Langley's our home. It always has been, and that's where we try and drive it from. Now, to touch just quickly on the outdoor rink of MAP, because the question come up there, we have hosted practices and other events that we've done. We run the little tykes, the five- and six-year-olds, out at the outdoor rinks. But we also ran into a recent situation a couple of years ago, where the floor was pulled up out of the outdoor rink at MAP, which is out behind LSS School, making it inoperable for us to use now. So with the floor that's down there now, ball hockey does not have the ability to use it. It is like running on rough pavement. You can't pass balls. You chew up your sticks. It's just inoperable for us to use it. So when the outdoor George Preston box came along, that was perfect. We thought, okay, we obviously aren't going to be able to use MAP anymore. Well, let's see what we can do. Now, I do believe we still try and run tryouts. We run stuff in there, but it's complicated for us, because if anybody knows how to play ball hockey, it has to roll on a smooth surface. So when the new George Preston rink came along, the outdoor one, we started using that, and we started running practices and young kids' games, and it was perfect. But the inefficiency to play anything more than five- and six-year-old kids prevented us from expanding and doing anything out there as well.
Right, okay, thank you. We do have some more questions here, so we'll, Counselor Richter.
Thank you. I understand that there may be cross-scheduling issues, particularly with hockey teams that have ended up in playoffs. So of course, they need ice for their playoffs. But when does your season actually start?
Our first games, we start usually the very first week of April. So we start the very first week of April. We actually draft our teams the first week of March, and coaches and teams start practicing right into spring break, right into the first games of April. Now, we've run into teams, ice hockey teams, that when they go into the playoffs and they go deep into the playoffs, we understand that we might lose a rink for a week at a time, and we try and shuffle around. There's a local company in Langley that we've borrowed floor time from them to be able to at least get our season started. But we desperately wait for that time, not to see the teams lose and get out of the playoffs, but to free up that ice so we can have floor space again and run our spring season.
Okay, so your absolute drop-dead date is the first week of April.
Yes, correct.
Now, have our staff been attempting to work with you guys to find solutions?
Yeah, actually, we've met with several members with the township, gentleman by the name of Keith Holloway, and a couple other gentlemen as well, too. They've been very forward to try and find alternate solutions for us. Unfortunately, what was presented to us won't allow us to move forward with our association. And there's two big parts to that. The one, first of all, is, part number one, the big promotion is, don't worry about George Preston indoors. You guys will be able to use outdoor George Preston. So the first thing to think about with that one is, our association and our sport has never been considered an outdoor sport. So potentially, if we're playing outdoors, we might have to deal with the environment. We might have to deal with noise. You might have to deal with all kinds of stuff. And it's different than playing in an arena. Now, the second part to that is, moving out to the George Preston outdoor box, we were presented with a proposal saying, "We will fix the deficiencies inside of George Preston outdoor box, and we will have a game ready for you for March 6th." That was the deadline we were given, which I believe, if you look at the calendars, is about three weeks from now. The deficiencies that would need to be done to there, again, there's a chain-link fence that was built around the rink that does not allow us to play ball hockey. There's no measurement on when the ball can go out of the glass. There's no ability to bounce balls off of glass. So having glass is critical to a hockey environment to be able to play hockey. The second thing is, there was a score clock that was installed in there that doesn't support penalties. It has a penalty light on it. Well, in hockey, if anybody's ever seen it, you get a two-minute penalty, a four-minute penalty, or multiple penalties. So the score clock, again, does not. And then the biggest one, that a lot of people don't seem to think is important, is having bleachers so spectators can come out and watch. And if you've ever seen a sport like this, I know the comment was, when the kids get older, that people don't come out and watch it. You got to see what it's like when the peanut and Peewee and Pop and these kids come out. There are hundreds of people that come out to see these games and play. Grandparents, grand, you know, the siblings, the parents, everybody comes out just to see what these games are like. And to add one more element, when we do it inside of George Preston or Alder Grove, I myself go there on spare time, and I plug in my sound, and I play music during the games, and have a good environment going. And it really just adds so much fun to it. And now, going out to an outdoor box is just going to be a downhill slide for the quality of our sport that we're providing.
Okay, so you've indicated that on this form you submitted, that you're being pushed outside to less than adequate facilities.
Correct.
That higher standards are needed. I guess my question, specific question, is what is needed to be adequate, understanding that this year, it looks like we may have scheduling overlaps for whatever reason. So
Well, when
You mentioned the chain-link fence has to go, glass is needed.
Yes. So the chain-link fence would have to be removed off of George Preston outdoor box. It would have to be new hockey glass installed all the way around. A new score clock would need to be installed that handles multiple penalties and penalty times. And bleachers would need to be installed for parents and families to be able to view games.
Okay, so how many seats are needed in these bleachers?
I mean, I would say anywhere around 100 seats is probably sufficient. Again, the more seats you add, the more ability we have to invite bigger crowds. The less seats we have, it's, you know, it's hard to have anybody come out and watch a game.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Hey, Counselor Woodward.
Just had a couple of questions. First of all, I'm going to follow up on some of the details that you've given. You said can't use George Preston this year. You mean indoors, right? I want to clarify your comment there. You stated very clearly, we can't use George Preston this year. Can you clarify that?
The George Preston indoor arena, we've been told that we will not get access to it until the final week of May. Sorry, yeah, the final week of May. So we will lose all of April and all of May, two months of our season, and the week that we've been giving it to is the week before our playoffs start. So we lose that entire floor time, and we run all night long, weekdays, Saturdays, Sundays. We lose all that time.
You're referring to the loss of the indoor facility?
Correct, yes.
Okay. And then, of course, the outdoor facility, I'm going to get to in a second. You also stated your season begins in April. When does it end?
Middle of June. Usually, the second to third week in June is when we play our final games.
Okay, so I want to just review again, because I think Counselor Richter touched on it, many deficiencies of the outdoor area. So I want you to list, so what I had here was bleachers, glass, score clock, and chain-link fence.
Yes.
Okay, so what is the long-term scenario? Because is, you know, is the sport an outdoor sport, or can it become an outdoor sport? So you stated, you know, you've mentioned, sort of touched on that it's not really an outdoor sport. If it's not an outdoor sport, why do you think that we're building an outdoor area?
Well, that's what we never understood, is there was an outdoor box being built. Nobody was ever consulting with us. And it seems like somebody is making the decision to say, "Your sport should be played outside." And we've never designed our sport to be an outdoor sport. We've never envisioned it growing in that direction. We've always played inside of hockey rinks when the ice came up, and we played it that way. So long-term vision, George Preston outdoor box does not accomplish what we need. All it does is give us a temporary solution to go, "Okay, when is the new rink going to open?" Or "When is George Preston going to allow us to go back in?" So it's a temporary solution. If somebody was to ask me today, if I could present a five-year vision of what would make our association and other associations, because I know lacrosse and other associations use indoor as well, too, the fieldhouse at Langley Event Center is a sufficient establishment to host a hockey game. It is indoors, has proper change rooms, it has proper glass, it has proper seating, and it does not have the ability to have ice put in it at a later date. So at some point in time, and again, this is future visions, at some point in time, if the township was ever able to build a facility that had two of those rinks inside one enclosed environment, we could share it with lacrosse, we could share it with baseball, we could even share it with soccer if they wanted to play indoor games. There are so many advantages of doing that. But right now, the Langley Event Center and the Langley Event Center fieldhouse seem to be locked up quite tight from, again, partnerships with other associations as well, too.
For the purpose of the delegation, I think myself and council can follow up and get clarity with staff on some of that afterwards. You mentioned McLeod Athletic Park as well, cannot be used, but you didn't list why. So you can clarify for me why.
So ball hockey is a sport where, if you envision playing ice hockey, for anybody who doesn't know about ball hockey, when you're playing ice hockey and you shoot a pass across the ice, it slides beautiful, and that's, we call it tape-to-tape pass. So ball hockey has the same ability to do that. So you need a clean, smooth floor to be able to pass it from one back to the other. Up until a couple of years ago, there was a multipurpose, plastic corrugated floor that was down there. That worked beautiful for us. It was smooth. It allowed us to play our sports. It allowed everything to work on it. There was a decision made by township members to remove that floor and pull it out. Now, I understand, no, please don't, I don't know the exact answer, but I understand, I've been told that there were condensation problems. There were complaints about the way the floor worked. But nobody consulted with us, one of the biggest users of that facility, to say, "We're going to pull this up. Do you have any complications with that?" So when we showed up there one day, and the floor had been pulled up, well, the plastic corrugated floor was actually over top of concrete. Maybe it's asphalt, but it's a very ripply and very uneven floor. So now, if we were to try and pass a ball, you can't pass a ball to somebody, because it bounces along. And anybody who uses professional hockey sticks or composites, they can't use them in there either, because it just tears them all up and everything.
And that's, of course, okay, so I'll follow up on that as well. So thank you for that. You also mentioned local company borrowed, you borrowed time from a local company.
Yes.
Explain that option to me.
So there's a company in downtown Langley called The Hockey House. And so The Hockey House, we're good friends with them. We try to support them in our off-season. We, our association runs in spring, and we've always been a spring association. There's been big visions for many years that maybe we could run all year round, or run a fall league or all that. But we're in no way, shape, or form heading that direction, because we don't have the floor space. Now, the local company called The Hockey House, they have, they're a private facility. They have an indoor rink with that same type of a plastic floor, and they run roller hockey, men's leagues, and they even run a fall ball hockey as well, too. So a lot of our kids that play through Valley Ball Hockey play there in the fall, just to keep their skills up and going like that. So we'll go knock on his door and say, "We're desperate. Can you give us an hour on a Friday? Can you give us..." But the way their association and their building, or their company has been going, they're filling up faster than we can do it. So at this point right now, even if we were able to grab extra space from them, we're paying it at a premium, because they're a private company. So they're going to charge us an arm and a leg to be able to use it.
That's great. Thanks. I'm going to let others ask questions, but I also wanted to just thank you for bringing the delegation forward. I think it's been very informative and helpful, and I'll I think it's been very informative and helpful and I'll, I think a lot of us, myself included, will follow up.
Thank you.
What's the urgency? So, you mentioned, you mentioned April, so really, we have until April to, to work on solving this problem, is that?
Correct, yes.
Okay, so I'll just, that's great, correct. So, and again, I wanna thank you again. We can't solve problems we don't know about, so thank you very much.
Sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Long.
Thanks, and I'm gonna go briefly because I think we could be at this all night, and I think that it's, it's been well said by council that we've heard your concerns. And I know staff are working on it, and as Counselor Ferguson said, we're gonna work it through for sure.
Perfect, thank you.
But I just wanted to say that the information I've got is that we can do those deficiency fixes for George Preston, because we got a memo, I don't know if staff, if the rest of council got it, but saying that they already ordered the clock and that there's gonna be seating for 200 people, that they're gonna replace the glass in time for your season to start.
Well, that is great to hear, so thank you for relaying that to us.
And then, and whatever else you've brought up, I think we're gonna find a way to address that, too. So, I guess, and I was, had some other questions, but they have been answered by, by you, by other members of council.
Now, if I can add one more point to that, we are desperately hoping that George Preston outdoor box does get the deficiencies done for the season. If it does not, and the ice is not pulled out of George Preston, we cannot run our association this year. That is critical to us. So, if, if the ice was pulled back out of George Preston and we were allowed to continue on with our association the way we always have, that is our ultimate goal and that's what we're hoping for, and we're hoping that you will review and try and assess that as a situation. But if there's absolutely no way of moving that ice out of George Preston and we are being forced to play out in the George Preston outdoor box, if those deficiencies are not done, we will now have to refund players, we will have to tell kids, sorry, you're not gonna be able to play, and reduce our association down to a smaller size because we do not have enough floor time to be able to play all of our games.
Well, Counselor Ferguson guarantees that it will be done.
Thank you.
There's no doubt about that. The other thing is that, as he also mentioned, the ice will come out eventually, so some of your bigger events will go back in the arena, I would think.
Well, that is great to hear because we were asked to host the provincials for volleyball or for ball hockey this year. We also had the opportunity to present, or host nationals this year, too, but we stepped back because when all this started happening, we said, we just don't know if there's gonna be floor space available for us, so...
In defensive staff, there's a huge amount of users wanting the ice time, so there is, there is definitely, you know, competing interests, so we have to work with everybody and make sure everybody's happy in the end.
Yes, and the only comment I wanna make to that is, I understand that I support ice hockey as much as I support ball hockey, but we've always known that ball hockey and lacrosse at the same time, they're considered a spring sport, and ice hockey is considered a winter sport. So, what's happening right now is, they're taking priority over a spring sport and saying, no, we're a winter sport, but we're gonna push you guys out and we're gonna use that instead. And that's the disconnect that I'm finding.
I think it's the success of the Riverman, they've done very well, so they likely be in the playoffs, that's, that's one of the factors. Anyway, we will get it fixed.
Well, that's an interesting stat, so thank you.
All right, thank you. Counselor Davis.
No, I had a whole bunch of questions and just about every one of them been answered, but I just wanna comment that the George Preston Civic Center was built for the township of Langley's residents, and, and you talked about capping. You have like 85% of them in Langley, and, and you have like 1,200. Have you gone into capping or rejecting kids?
We are waiting to find out if we have to. We have not capped it yet, but we may have to step back and start refunding if this is not resolved.
We have to fix it. Okay, the other thing that I, I don't know if, I, you also have boys and girls, it's coed teams.
Yeah, it is coed team.
Not just boys.
Yes.
And you also have a different system. You draft the kids and you put them on teams so that you don't get all the good kids on one team, you get all, you get, the way you do it, I think it's very fair, there's no real super, I mean, some teams always win, but the way you do it, and I think that that's even fairer because every kid gets to play generally in the games, even if you're winning or losing, and I sense that. And I...
Well, I appreciate you pointing that out. We have implemented a policy within our association called fair play. And what that means is, every child gets a fair amount of floor time. Doesn't matter if you're a first-time player or a resident pro, whether you're a boy or a girl, we draft the teams like the NHL, we put the teams together and everybody goes out, and all of our coaches, the volunteer coaches, are driven to say, let's teach all of these kids how to enjoy teamwork, camaraderie, sports, and enjoy life.
Yeah, you know, I would have pegged you another day over 40, not 49. Okay.
Thank you.
I think that we, we, like I say, it's, this is a special league, well, not a special league at all. It's a league within the township of Langley and we have to support it as council.
Thank you very much.
And we have some good ideas, thank you.
Counselor Ferguson.
One last thing, if I may, maybe the staff can quickly answer, what is the status of the McLeod Athletic Park right now?
As to this floor surface, I believe it was removed because there was some condensation issues, but I do not know in terms of if it could be replaced or the schedule for replacement, I know it's not scheduled, but that's something we'll have to pursue.
Okay, can, can you guys practice there still?
We can, but we only allow odd practices here and there until we find out. Now, if I can add one more point to that, for two years, volleyball hockey has been asking the township to replace that floor and fix it, and two years ago, we even offered to subsidize the cost of doing it, and it got backlogged, 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 and it wasn't until approximately three weeks ago, we got an email saying, this is what the cost is to replace it if you guys would like to put some funds towards it. Unfortunately, what was presented to us, the floor doesn't work for what we're gonna do.
And I understand, and I just wanna last, my last point here is, anybody in the audience or anybody's listening at home, and especially council members, watching ball hockey at all level is exciting sport. It's not like the guys picking up sticks with a tennis ball and playing, and nothing wrong with that, but the level is very, very high, it's exciting, and as you go up the ladder, they have all sorts of levels for play, and once you start getting up to the higher levels, certainly at the Valley Western, the Western Canada Cup, and also the national teams, the provincial, the level is very, very high and it's very exciting. So, I just wanted to pass that on as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, we have no more questions.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. All right, we have our fifth delegation, Geraldine Jordan. If you can, just for the record, say your name as well as where you live, it'd be helpful.
Right. My name is Geraldine Jordan and I live at number 52-8888-216th Street in Langley. So, good evening, mayor and members of the council. I'm here this evening as a committee member of Hub Langley, which is a cycling advocacy group in Langley, and I'm also here as a topam parent and I sit on a PAC subcommittee for Safe Routes to School and a community member. As such, I'm here to talk with you about the urgent need for improved cycling infrastructure in Langley. In particular, we are asking for physically separated biking facilities on 216th Street in North Langley and, more broadly, the adoption of cycling for all ages and abilities through amending the subdivision and development servicing bylaw to include protected bike lanes. As an active transportation mode, bicycling is beneficial, efficient, and inexpensive. A study of the Netherlands, Germany, Sweden, and Denmark, which have the four highest walking cycling rates globally, have lower obesity rates and greater longevity with half the per capita spending on healthcare. Other research shows improved fitness, reduced air pollution and greenhouse gas emissions, and encouraging human-scale communities. Pucher and Bueller in 2008, in their article on Making Cycling Irresistible: Lessons From The Netherlands, Denmark, and Germany, state eight recommendations which make cycling safe and convenient. Their first is separated cycling facilities. That is separating cyclists from faster-moving motorized traffic and from slower-moving pedestrian traffic. This is a number-one key to creating human-scale invitation to cycle. In addition to protected bike lanes, other recommendations to make cycling irresistible include traffic calming, intersection alterations, education, traffic laws, promotion and events, and bike parking facilities, and integration with public transport. For example, in Langley, integrating cycling with the Carvath Exchange would greatly enhance people's ability to conveniently access public transit by bike rather than by driving or ride hailing. We know that the rates of cycling in Langley are abysmal. Mostly, people are afraid for their safety. Less than 2% of schoolchildren in North Langley bike to school. Without the protection from faster-moving motorized traffic, the bicycle level of stress increases and people won't bike if the stress is too high. Painted bike lines are not sufficient. Cars drive right over those, nor are bump lines such as on 28th Street Bridge any better. The drivers of motorized vehicles simply hear that they are in the bike lane when they drive over the bump lines. By then, it is too late for a cyclist traveling in the bike lane. Here is an excellent, concrete example of where we could start. We need protected cycling facilities on 216th Street North between 80th Avenue and 96th Avenue. This is an important, major piece of transportation infrastructure along which motorized traffic will increase exponentially in a residential area and directly past two elementary schools, a Calais de Voyageurs at 88th Avenue and Topam Elementary School at 91st Avenue. Currently, active commuting by bike, to school by bike, is either on the sidewalk, which jeopardizes pedestrian safety, or on the road, which, while a designated TOL bike lane, has no cycling infrastructure. How can this possibly be safe for an eight-year-old, for any school child, for an adult? What will happen when traffic volume increases with the 216 interchange? Protected bike lanes are the highest priority. This means protection from faster-moving motorized traffic through one of the following recommendations by the National Association of City Transportation Officials Urban Bike Way Design Guide. For example, raised medians, concrete barriers, grassy boulevards, bollards, or planters. Here is a base map snapshot of Modi's Geometrics laning plans for the interchange project on 216th Street North. I've added color to show the bike lane in yellow and a separating boulevard in green, and I've also added some illustrations. A multi-use path is on the protected side of the boulevard. I'm requesting that the bike lane be planned and built alongside the sidewalk or multi-use path and inserting the grassy boulevard between the bike lane and the motor vehicle lane as shown at the right of this slide. This would be an elegant, smart utilization of space. In Langley, we need an invitation to cycle through infrastructure which is safe and user-friendly, and plans, policies, and bylaws which invite people to cycle as a healthy, beneficial transportation mode. How might we get there? We need design guidelines like Vancouver's guidelines for all ages and abilities. We need to amend the subdivision and development servicing bylaw 2001 number 4861, specifically section R, to include the requirement of protected bike lanes along arterial and collector roads, and also to amend the requirements for all road classifications to include safe cycling spaces, especially near schools where schoolchildren actively commute and are vulnerable road users. We need the infrastructural invitation to physically, of physically separated bike lanes along 216th Street North from 80th Avenue to 96th Avenue, and not just there, but throughout the township, to be connected within our communities and to connect our community of communities for the benefit of all residents. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, you've provided a copy of this presentation to the clerks, I'm assuming, because it's on the computers.
I have a written submission.
Oh, you do, okay.
As a PowerPoint slides can certainly be submitted, also, as well as this talk, which is similar to the written submission.
Yeah, I'll confirm later that it'll be distributed to us. I know you and I have chatted a little bit about, about some of the, some of the changes that you're, you're considering for the subdivision bylaw, so I wanna, first of all, I wanna appreciate that you're coming forward with a solution that, that would maybe transition some of this onto development rather than 216th, of course, which would fall onto the taxpayer to retrofit. I think that that's something that's kind of important, that maybe people in the audience and some of the others don't understand that what you're requesting is that we change the, the bylaw which would require developers to start putting in this infrastructure now rather than what we're facing on 216th was a retrofit. I just wanna thank you again for proceeding in that way, and I think it makes a lot of sense, and I'll follow up further, thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Arneson.
Yes, thank you very much for coming. This is also something that's quite dear to my heart, actually, and I was requested to join a group of stakeholders that are looking at one of the local schools in Willoughby, and the exercise is to look at opportunities to make safer options for children rather than being dropped off by car. So, one of the things that's come up through Hub, because they have a representative there, is making sure that there are safe bike areas to go. One of the things that came up, and I'm just curious what you would think about this, is an opportunity to use some of our trailway systems that we currently have for a safe alternative to being on the road and in a bike path.
Yes, that's a really great question. So, trails are great because they're totally separated from vehicle traffic, but we also want cyclists to have efficient ways, and so it's convenient to cycle. And if a cyclist has to, say, double the length of a journey, then that becomes something that discourages people from cycling. So, yes, trails are great, we need more of those, and we also need cycling lanes.
Thank you. The other innovative idea, and it's great to have a number of different people there because ICBC was there and representatives from the school district, so it's interesting to me that somebody else also suggested, what about our greenways? What if we could use those as a trail system? Because they are already funded, but it was pointed out, actually, and we didn't realize that they're part of our green drainage infrastructure. So, there might be a challenge there, but it still could be something we could look at as an opportunity as we continue to build out. But thank you very much for coming.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I just wanted to say, switching the boulevard with the bike lane is brilliant. I don't know why we didn't think of that sooner, but thanks for bringing it to our attention.
Thank you.
Thank you, I just had a question related to Counselor Richter's comment, was that when, when we separate the cars from the bike path, I noticed that the walking path and the bike path are now beside each other. Are they also separated in your recommendation from each other, or are they just walking and cycling separated by a painted line? Or what, what separates walking from cycling?
Well, so typically, a surface, so a sidewalk would have sidewalk blocks, whereas a cycling lane would be asphalt.
Okay, but they're not, they're not necessarily separated from each other. You could cycle on one or walk on the other, they wouldn't be separated from each other necessarily?
Well, yes, so typically, a sidewalk would be for pedestrians.
Right.
And a cycling lane would be a designated cycling lane. The point of a cycling lane is to separate traffic speeds. So, faster motorized traffic from slower-moving cyclists, and faster-moving cyclists from slower-moving pedestrians. The danger to a cyclist with a motor vehicle accident can be catastrophic.
For sure. Yeah, so I guess, I guess what I'm asking, I totally appreciate that, I've seen lots of paths where there's a divided painted line down the middle, one side is for cycling, one side is for walking. Is that what you're sort of recommending here, or, or you're recommending also a different surface for cycling versus pedestrians?
So, a smooth surface for cycling is really important because if you have a rough surface or if you've got debris in a bike lane, that becomes really problematic and also a risk and a hazard. So, an asphalt surface is typically better than a sidewalk surface or a multi-use path surface, which cyclists tend not to enjoy.
Okay, that, that helps me perfectly.
Point is to separate the traffic.
Right.
From the faster, if you're not going to have traffic calming measures like home zones as they have in Holland in residential areas where priority is given to cyclists and speed limits are at 7 kilometers an hour, so cyclists actually have priority over motorized traffic, and if that won't be done in the township, which would be a great idea, I'd be happy to do a delegation about that, too, and suggest that, then separating cyclists from motorized traffic is really key. Cyclists would prefer to bike next to pedestrians than next to a car that's moving at 10 times the speed that a cyclist is going at, especially if you're eight years old.
Right, for sure. Thank you very much, there's no more questions, thank you. Okay, we will now move on to bylaws for first and second reading. This is a grant, rezoning application, number 100542, Grant Street Development Corporation on 21615 Fraser Highway, and bylaw number 5441. Do I have a motion? Counselor Davis? Second or from Counselor Long? Second or from Counselor Long? And Counselor Richter, you are up.
Yeah, just a quick question through you to staff. This commercial zone C3, by adding a liquor retail store as a permitted use, are we creating a precedent here that could be problematic for us going forward?
Your worship, the intent is to deal with the site specifically, so this doesn't create an issue or a problem or a precedent for future similar zoned sites.
So this rezoning will only apply to this particular property, then?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Arneson?
Yes, thank you. I have some serious concerns about this site plan. Just by way of reference, I actually live very close to this intersection, and I go by it very regularly. It's a bit difficult, when you look at the rendering here, to see exactly what's going on, but yeah, the staff report there with what is the schematic seems to indicate, from my perspective, if you're familiar with the area, and I did actually talk to the proponent at length about some of the challenges that I foresee with access to this property. So I guess one of the constraints in getting a staff report like this is that they're not required to create any kind of traffic management plan or queuing plan or the pattern changes. This is a very, very congested corridor. So I'm not suggesting that they shouldn't be allowed to develop. It's been an empty lot for quite some time. So I think that that's appropriate. However, I am challenged to consider the particular uses that could be contemplated there, and I do actually agree that a liquor store is not really a necessity at this location, given many others in the fairly near vicinity. So I'm wondering whether or not we could send this back, actually, to staff, because I would actually prefer to see a traffic management study to indicate, for example, if the Starbucks is going to have a drive-through, where I'm sure from an engineering point of view, they're accounting for that, but I'm very concerned about the access to the property and the queuing for that use. So I would like to make that motion.
Your worship, perhaps I can just provide a quick clarification. The subject site was approved by council last year for a development permit, and the rendering that you see on the screen is from that report from last year. The current proposal is not related to the form and character, but rather to add a licensee retail store as a permitted use within the site.
Okay, thank you. So we do have a motion here to refer to staff. Are you continuing with that, Counselor Arneson?
Yes.
And we have a second or Counselor Richter? Okay. You can speak to it, Counselor Arneson?
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Okay, thank you very much. I'm challenged by looking at this, where I realize, you know, Mr. Safi is saying things that are very rational in terms of that there's always already a sequence in place about decisions that have been made about this property. However, I really do feel that under particular circumstances, and I would highlight this one as being one of those, that we really ought to be much more proactive in determining the degree to which we are creating very real safety concerns for this corner. Because if you look at the rendering, you can see that going north on 216th, there's two lanes, and there is even now very much confusion about the fact that the lane that's to the right, you can only turn, I think it's on to 52nd Avenue from that. So there's a lot of internal mixing going in that direction, and now you're going to add to it people going to and fro with businesses, quite frankly, where lots of people are going to be coming in and out with great regularity. This is not a place where these multi-commercial uses are going to have people that are staying for hours on end. They're designed to get people in and out. So I have a problem with that, and I think that we would be well advised before we're going to say yes to this, to make sure that we're doing it in a manner that public safety needs to be paramount. We all know that ICBC rates are going up, and there's a huge incidence of crashes, and I think that our township staff reports should take more into considerations situations. And, you know, at some point, I'll probably make a motion to say, under high-volume corridors, for example, we need to look at traffic movements in the area and ask ourselves at some point if we aren't creating a hazard by allowing uses like this.
Counselor Richter.
Yeah, and I guess the question I have is the same thing. We gave, apparently gave, a development permit, but the development permit was issued for a use that wasn't contemplated. Like, I think that this new liquor store use does create potential traffic impacts. And I have talked to the proponent as well, too, and what I was told was they feel that this is a prime location for people to stop and get a bottle of wine on their way home to work, from work. So there is going to be traffic impacts, and I think we should be looking at those before we approve this rezoning.
Counselor Ferguson.
Thank you. I was just kind of wondering whether the people getting coffee would be in competition with the people getting a bottle of wine. It just seems to me something like a coffee shop with a Starbucks would generate more than the liquor store. I'm confident that our staff has gone through a rigorous zoning and rezoning process to get to this stage now. You don't just walk in and hand an eight-and-a-half-by-eleven napkin to our staff and say, gee, I'd like to have this, this, and this. Please approve it and put it in front of council. I don't think that happens. I'm absolutely sure it's a rigorous process, and I wanted to bring council's attention to page 21-F1 is the developer-held information meeting where four people showed up, and we've got a public hearing coming up to see what the public would hear as well. So I think that there's due diligence. I think I'd like, I'd rather, your worship, just wait and hear from the public at the public hearing, because I think that's important, and I think, I don't fault a person operating a business from not having any customers. So thank you. I won't be supporting a referral.
Counselor Woodward.
I just had a couple of questions through you acting mayor to the staff. Was the traffic management plan part of the original review, given, and was it known at the time of the original application that the drive-through was intended for a Starbucks location?
Your worship, just to, I guess, provide clarification, the site did not require rezoning to accommodate what you see on the screen. It was a development permit application.
No, no, that clarifies it then exactly. That's helpful. Thank you very much. Yeah, I find it, I mean, I kind of agree with Counselor Arneson's points, but I think from a process point of view, it's really challenging to come back, I think, after an approval and where you've got the type of store, and I would always want to try to limit it, my comments to the specifics that they're trying to permit a specific use of a specific tenant. And from what I've heard from talking to the proponent as well, was that it will, in fact, be a Starbucks, which I think would generate a lot more demand than the liquor store in terms of a queuing and traffic management plan, and I think that that ship, it sounds like that ship has sailed a tad, so. You know, for me, I had a bunch of other concerns, but they're not pertaining to the use of a liquor store. So I kind of feel like really our hands are tied a tad, especially at first and second. But I think, Counselor Arneson, I do support your intent with some of those concerns, but I kind of agree with Counselor Ferguson that they're more related to Starbucks and that ship has kind of sailed. Thank you.
Thank you. And just my comments on this, I think we spent quite a bit of time working on this proposal a while back, and I think right from the beginning, we knew there was going to be a Starbucks or that type of coffee shop with a drive-through. We spent considerable time talking about the challenges with the drive-through, making sure there was enough space and room. The fact that the liquor store is coming in there, I don't think changes the use of what it was before. There was always going to be other businesses in there, so I won't be supporting this referral back to staff. Counselor Arneson.
One last term at the mic. I didn't support it in the first place, and so I'm being consistent. I don't support it now, and so, but, you know, if you want to send it forward to the public to hear what they have to say, unfortunately, I could not go to the public informational event, and that was too bad. And when I asked for some kind of, I don't know, some kind of detailed analysis of the traffic flow, I realize we did look at this, but I think that it's our obligation to continue to look at plans, and if things change, or we have 100% discretion to be able to do that. And I'm using that discretion to say that, you know, I think we should look more closely at the traffic movements in the area, so that's why I brought this forward for review.
Counselor, oh, okay. All right, so this is a vote on the referral, so I'll call the vote. And the vote fails with, or passes, sorry, fails with Counselor Ferguson, Counselor Coons, Counselor Whitmarsh, Counselor Woodward, and Counselor Long opposed. And now to the main motion. Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I just wanted to ask another question through the staff. In Mr. Backen, in regards to the letter we received from the RCMP expressing some of their concerns, what's the process that we go through in referring those things to the RCMP? And they kind of expressed concerns, but didn't really outline them in any specifics. So I was curious on the process there.
The referral, your worship, is made pursuant to policies, and it's really a matter of council to decide if they wish to take action on the language that is used in the responses provided.
Okay, so I'm not going to suggest we do anything with that at first and second, but I would like to suggest to the proponent that they maybe review that and be prepared to speak to that at the public hearing if they can. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call the question on the main motion. And the motion passes with Counselor Richter and Counselor Arneson opposed. Okay, and there are no other bylaws, and so we move on to the mayor and council report. Now, normally, Mayor Frosch gets very excited about this, so I take great pleasure in doing it instead of him. Well, good evening, everyone, and welcome. Mayor Frosch had to leave a bit early because he's attended several events and attending some other events, and so, but wanted to highlight some of the events that have happened over the past little while. On Tuesday, January 22nd, the Gapeong Korean War Memorial Unveiling Ceremony was held at the Derek Double Day Arboretum. There were close to 200 invited guests and dignitaries in attendance, including the mayor of Gapeong County, Sun Ji Kim, and members of his international relations staff. The Korean War was one of Canada's most significant military engagements of the 20th century, and the vital role that Canadian soldiers played during the Battle of Gapeong forged a unique bond between our two countries. The bravery and tenacity shown by Canadian soldiers during this pivotal battle marked a turning point in the war and affected the course of history. We are honored that Gapeong County has chosen to commemorate Canada's contribution with this poignant memorial, and we appreciate the efforts of the Gapeong Stone Committee who made it possible to bring it to our community. Thursday, January 31st, was the annual UDI Mayor's Panel and Municipal Expo, hosted by the township and held at the Langley Events Centre. The event featured a facilitated discussion on traffic plans in light of growth, commercial industrial land availability, the speed of development application approvals, and secondary suites and other rental housing solutions. It was another sold-out event. Mayor Frosch also attended the annual Langley RCMP Detachment Awards Ceremony on January 31st. This week, many of us attended the grand opening of the new Otter Co-op Liquor Store. The event was well-attended in the store located on the same site as the Co-op's current retail building. It is comprised of two levels, filled with a variety of brands, and is a very exciting new venture for the Co-op. On Saturday, February 9th, Mayor Frosch attended the first meeting of the year for the Langley Environmental Hero Awards, and if you know of a local environmental hero or organization, please forward a nomination. Saturday evening, Mayor Frosch attended the Giving Hearts Gala, where lunch with himself and Mayor Van Den Broek was auctioned off for $3,000. Wow, $3,000 to eat with the two mayors. Total monies raised for the new Langley Memorial Hospital Emergency Department and the MRI suite was $200,000. Other members of council have also been very busy, with Counselor Richter attending the annual Chinese New Year at the Church in the Valley on Sunday, February 3rd, and there was also the celebration at the Muriel Arneson Library Saturday, February 9th. On Thursday, February 6th, Counselor Long attended the official ribbon-cutting ceremony for the Otter Co-op Liquor Store and a special event announcing that the 2020 Canadian Junior Curling Championships will be coming to George Preston Recreation Centre and hosted by the Langley Curling Club. And congratulations to Counselor Long, who has been selected to sit on the FCM board. On Friday, February 8th, Counselor Coons and myself, we attended the KPU Nursing Presentation and Communication Event. And of course, just in case you didn't know, the upcoming events, February 14th is Valentine's Day. So if you haven't figured out what to do, you better start now. Do any other members of council have anything they'd like to say with regards to their activities?
I want to expand on my activities. I'm passing you a pin there.
Counselor Long, you would like to expand on your activities. Go ahead.
Well, thank you, Mr. Acting Mayor, although I'm not on here.
Oh.
But yes, you mentioned, of course, the ribbon-cutting at Otter Co-op, which was a lot of fun for everybody, but that afternoon was the announcement of the New Holland Canadian Junior Men's and Women's Curling Championship. So I've passed out a pin from Curling Canada. Counselor Coons was there with me, and it was a very exciting announcement, because that's going to be quite the tournament in 2020. And we were also, this should mention, we were able to meet with members of Team Tardy, right, who, and Tyler Tardy, who is a local curler, has won three times in a row, back-to-back, the Junior Curling Championships, which has never been done before. So congratulations to him, of course, and congratulations to the club and all those involved in this phenomenal event that's going to happen in 2020.
Great, thank you.
And you've got a pin now from Curling Canada.
Great. Counselor Arneson.
Yeah, just a brief metro report. February 8th, I was at a 2019 meeting to, mostly the discussion was around staff reports having to do with a number of sustainability initiatives. I won't go into all of them, but suffice it to say, they're all very innovative, and they range all the way from special coating for our pipes to reduce corrosion, to getting more nutrients out of our wastewater, climate literacy, and the development of rental housing near transit. So these are all very exciting initiatives, and I just would encourage council, if you have any other ideas about our work plan, if you'd like to put them forward, I'm happy to bring them to our planning session in the next couple of months. Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. And, okay, now we'll move on to other business. Counselor Woodward.
I just have a quick one regarding the delegation for the 216th overpass. It was suggested, you know, by Ms. Jordan, who I know a little bit, that their design change to 216th was something that could still be done, or there wasn't a width issue, it was simply a separation issue. That's how it looks. So I just wanted to just get a memo to clarify the feasibility of the requested change to 216th and get some confirmation on whether that's still possible and what that might look like and some of the implications. Of course, I've discovered many times, it's never easy, so I would like to get something in writing on that. Thank you.
Is that just a direction to staff? Memo to come back?
Just a memo to get, to review the feasibility of the requested change.
Okay.
No motion.
All right. Counselor Ferguson.
Yeah, certainly the value of all hockey, their delegation, refer that to staff and also to look at some of the things they talked about, including, you know, some concerns we had, McLeod Athletic Park, the new facility at the, I don't know how new it is, but a year's old, at George Preston, the score clock bleachers, status of glass and other things, ability to play, finding alternative locations, and also looking at when exactly the ice is going to be coming out. I know they've got championships and other things going out, so, and also looking at any other strategic ways. So certainly, I think that the staff understand what has to happen, and certainly, the staff can look at that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Richter.
Yeah, I'd like to refer Mr. McAnally's list of public safety concerns to staff for consideration when the budget comes back to council this year.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Davis?
Sorry, just, could maybe Counselor Ferguson, could we just put a timeframe on that, like, well, not, well...
Time for the season, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just thinking that if, just a friendly, that it is time-sensitive. Okay.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Long.
I was in supportive of all those, so are we going to have a motion then to refer all of those to staff? The ones that have been mentioned? Or are you just taking it as direction?
I think it was more as a direction to staff. Mr. Backen, is that, that's fine?
Yeah, yeah, thank you very much.
Okay, I think it's direction. Okay, anything else? All right.
Termination.
Termination.
Second.
David's and Long, all in favor? Thank you. Passed. Now, we will be moving to finishing our afternoon meeting, which didn't finish. We have a few items left on that. And so I guess we'll move right away. Is that correct, Mr. Backen? Okay. So.
Where were we?
We are.
G1.
G1. And so there are three pieces of correspondence. Do we have a motion to move all three?
Move all, then you can go down each one.
Okay, move them first and then go down. Okay. So a motion to accept all three? Is that Counselor Long?
Yes.
And Counselor Arneson has seconded. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, so we'll look at G1. The council received a letter from Paul Grabett, and we know we don't necessarily do proclamations, but this is to receive. And all those, and I guess we'll call a vote on this.
It's already been done, and all we have to do is acknowledge it.
Oh, we just acknowledged, okay, thank you. So G2? Oh, you want to speak on T1? Okay, sorry.
Very briefly, and as you can see, it explains that Heritage Week starts February 18th, and the Heritage Advisory Committee always has something that coordinates with Heritage Week, so keep your eyes and ears peeled. There'll be an announcement coming between now and the 18th by email or memo describing some of the work that we've been doing online with our work with descriptions of properties and statements of significance and so forth. So just tipping council off to keep an eye out that. It'll be coming for you in time for Heritage Week.
Thank you. Counselor Richter?
Yes, item G2.
Okay, yeah, well, okay, yeah, item G2. Good, we'll move on. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to move that council send a request to the Langley Ukulele Ensemble to perform a few songs at an April council meeting.
Do we have a second, or?
I second that for sure.
Counselor Arneson, beat you to it.
Yeah, that's right. Can we join along?
Okay, and we'll call the vote on G2. That's to send a letter asking them to come and perform for us in April. And? Just wait. Oh, there we go. Sorry. And it passes unanimously. There we go. Little problem with me pushing buttons. And G3. Counselor Woodward.
Okay, G3, I just wanted to ask some questions on the status of this. So my understanding, of course, is the DCCs must be paid, but that we would essentially be paying them and putting them into the DCCs ourselves if we chose to do so. Just want to clarify, that's correct?
That's correct. There is one other option, although it takes some explaining. Right now, we do have a social housing policy that does provide for exemptions for certain types of uses. It's theoretically possible, and there's some trepidation among staff, that you could direct us to include this facility in that category, in the which case the DCCs would simply not be paid.
Okay, so it was not clear from the staff report. It sounded like there was a lot of trepidation around that, and that that wasn't presented to them as an option in the correspondence that they sent to us. So just to clarify, we could, in fact, essentially like a text amendment to the definition and include just this facility within that definition?
That would take a bylaw amendment, as I understand it, to include it, which takes a little bit longer than a resolution simply to pay the amount from general revenue.
So it would not be, would be a bylaw process if we chose to embark upon it?
That's correct, because we adopted it by law.
Yeah. So if, what about the Metro Vancouver? They would also be excluded from payment if we go through that definition process on our end, though the Metro Vancouver is still required. So then we could, we could offer to pay for that on behalf of us ourselves to Metro Vancouver?
Correct. We can't exempt them from Metro Vancouver by law, so we'd have to look to the traditional means.
Okay, so I'll wait to hear from others, but that seems, that's a great policy. I'm really enjoying that new policy, or the new convention that we're pursuing. But I would support initiating that bylaw process to exempt this facility, given that a legal mechanism exists to do so. And that I would also like to refer the Metro Vancouver DCC fees to this year's budget process as a listed discretionary item, so we currently have a category of discretionary unfunded items. I would like to include that to go to the public, if it's not too late to do that. Oh, I can wait to hear from others at the discretion of the chair, but that's what I would suggest we proceed with.
I think let's just wait. We have a few speakers in line. Let's wait. We can return to Counselor Woodward on that. Okay, Counselor Long.
Thank you. And I'm supporting the concept here, but I'm wondering about timing. Is it really critical, the timing? And we certainly should embark on the bylaw adjustment, because there may be some other desirable facilities that may not be in the category that should be, and I can't think of what they are right now, but there could be other, rather than doing this one specifically. I mean, there could be another hospice or another type of housing facility in other parts of the township that may, or maybe should have qualified in the original bylaw. So I'm barking about that. But secondly, is there a panic? I mean, they don't have to pay it right away anyhow, do they?
Two issues. As to the timing, I think they're at the permit stage, so I believe there is some timing sensitivity. My suspicion is, though, given a way to avoid payment, I think there might be some flexibility. And secondly, the comments as other facilities were the cause of the trepidation. There were, being very liberal in our interpretation of the social housing definition to include hospice, all other uses have been considered, so to actually expand it further is the cause of the trepidation the Counselor Woodward highlighted. We wouldn't be recommending that unless it was a very extreme situation.
So you're recommending that we just pay it, rather than?
No, I mean in terms of trying to broaden the definition even further.
Okay, but I mean, at least going through the process, we'll know for sure. You know, we'll capture what needs to be captured and.
I think the understanding would be, we may be able to capture this definition, but going further, I think, would be highly suspected. Okay, thank you.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, so the understanding that there's, you know, we're really talking about us paying most of this fee from one of our funds to another fund, which was going to have some restrictions upon it. So, you know, in the end, it's not, it's not really a forgiveness in the sense of that. So versus collecting money from a hospice facility. So I'm going to make that motion that we do it as I outlined. I'll try to capture it as succinctly as possible to move that we initiate the bylaw process to include this facility and this facility only into the supporting house of definition for the purposes of exempting them from township DCCs. And secondly, refer the Metro Vancouver DCCs for this facility to the 2019 budget public consultation as an unfunded discretionary item. So move. Very wordy, unfortunately. Sorry about that.
Okay. Do we have a, the second is Counselor Ferguson. Any comments? Counselor Richter?
I can support the first part of the motion, but I don't think we should be paying Metro's DCCs, so I'd like to request a vision.
I would second that.
Okay, so all in favor of the vision? Okay, so we'll deal with the first part of the motion first. I'll clear the queue, and if anyone would like to speak to the first motion. Counselor Long.
Yeah, I just want to be sure. In the letter, it talks about some monies that we've already pledged and how that would be realotted and so forth. So I imagine that staff will figure that all out first, right? Because I can't do all the math right now, but there was some money already allotted, and so we'll be moving that towards this, I guess. I see a nod, so that. Yeah, so I'm not sure. Well, how will that be handled then? I guess it'll come back in the report.
Correct. At this point, we understand the overall envelope, the, I guess creativity needed to make that envelope work is going to take a bit of thought. Thank you.
I just have a question to Mr. Backen. The amount of, that is suggested here for DCC fees in our package, is that including the Metro Vancouver fees, or is Metro Vancouver fees on top of the fees that are listed here?
I'm afraid I don't know, your worship, because it has to be looked at and analyzed. I believe this is the number that was provided by the delegation or by the.
Okay, so this is the number provided by the delegation, okay. All right, so that would be helpful to know as we move forward. Okay. All right, so I will call the vote on, can we just, sorry, can we just read that motion again? That would be helpful.
The first part of the motion was to initiate a bylaw review in order to include the hospice in the supportive housing definition.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll call the vote. It's on G3. And that passes unanimously. And now we have the second part of the motion. If you wouldn't mind just reading the second part for us.
That the Metro Vancouver portion of the DCCs be funded through the discretionary fund.
Okay, thank you.
Your worship, just to clarify, I think there was a sentence that was missed. It was that be referred to the 2019 budget process to consider as an unfunded item, unfunded item, and get public consultation in regards thereto.
Unfunded.
Okay. Counselor Woodward, do you still want to speak to it?
Yeah, I just want to clarify.
Okay.
So yeah, the intent there was to go out to public consultation next week as an unfunded discretionary item. So we currently have quite a long list of those on that, one of the last pieces of paper we were given last Thursday. And so just add it to that list as an unfunded discretionary item, once you confirm the DCCs for Metro Vancouver. The intent was for it to go to public consultation and be considered on the 11th.
Any, okay, and we'll call the vote on that. G3. And that carries with Counselor Richter opposed. Okay, and now we have minutes of committees, and so can I have a motion to receive the minutes? Counselor Davis and second by Counselor Arneson. And then in H2, we have a recommended motion. Can I have a mover for the motion?
I believe you need to call the question, your worship, on receiving the minutes. By hand would be sufficient.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Okay, H2. Can I have a motion? Counselor Davis and Counselor Coontz. Any, and there, okay, call the question on H2. And that passes unanimously. And H3. Can I have a motion? Counselor Davis? Second, Counselor Coontz? And we'll call the question. Oh, sorry, H3. And that carries. All right, items from prior meetings. This is I1, reconsideration of non-farm use soil deposit application at 2238464th Avenue. And so can I have a motion? Yes.
So, sorry to the staff. Motion number one, that the non-farm use soil deposit application 22384-64 be referred back to staff to repetition the neighbors. I'm assuming that's the motion that is now live on the table. Is that correct?
That's correct. By way of a very brief explanation, that was the sequencing that was moved and seconded prior. Then however, there was a further motion that'd be deferred until we dealt with the policy issue was outlined in motion number two. Motion number two was effectively disposed of with the decision council made as to item F3. So F3 was at revision, so that has now come to closure. And that means then we refer back to I1 or motion one that non-farm use soil deposit application at 2238464th be referred back to staff to repetition the neighbors. Council's options are to approve, amend, or reject. They could approve it if they so wished, they could defeat it if they so wished, or they can actually allow it to go back to be repetitioned.
Counselor Woodward.
Just want to clarify, the reconsideration, if I remember, because it doesn't show up here because it's a deferred item, it was originally brought forward for reconsideration by Mayor Froze, is that correct?
That's correct.
Yeah, so given that he's not here, and again, I won't move this, but maybe we should consider, given that it was his item to be reconsidered and he's not available, that we could potentially refer this for one meeting for him to return, if that's something people want to consider. But given that it's his item, maybe that's something we could consider.
Counselor Long.
Yeah, thank you. I had it pushed a while ago, but yeah, I think we should proceed with motion number one. We've passed a new policy, and I think that was the intent all along. And now that we have this policy in place, repetitioning would be, would be the way to put it to a test. So I don't see any harm in that. I think that that should probably happen. So not sure where you are in the order of motions, but I thought we were actually going to proceed with motion one now that we, now we have already disposed of motion two.
I don't think we actually have a motion on the floor at this point, do we? The motion one is, or the referral is?
I think we need clarification on that. Is that, if motion one's on the floor, then I think we should vote on it. And if it isn't, I'll put it there.
Your worship, our recollection was that it was moved and seconded, and then there was a separate motion to defer, but we're going by memory.
That's what it says here, Mr. Chair. It says motion one be deferred until after staff, from my information on motion two, which we had this afternoon. So I'm moving that motion one be put back on the floor.
It's already on the floor, yeah.
We think it's on the floor.
Motion one is already on the floor?
Oh, good.
Okay.
So that's what we're going to do.
So that's what we're discussing. All right.
Okay, then I will support motion one. I think we have a new policy. We'll put it to the test, and we'll repetition the neighborhood and see what happens.
Okay.
I think we need that information to decide. I can't decide based on the old formula. I think I'm looking forward to basing it on the petition now, based on the new, the new formula.
Okay. Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, I don't know if we need the mayor here tonight. He's, this has been on our agenda since we have, the agenda comes on Thursday, as it always does. And so the opportunity is for us to review it, which we have, to ask questions of staff and to proceed accordingly. So I think I'm certainly ready to vote, and there's been changes made. We've talked already about motion number two. So it's motion number one is basically to repetition the neighbors. So I certainly think there's no reason why we can't do that. And then we'll find out what's, what the actual result is. Thank you.
Counselor Woodward.
Yeah, I mean, the reason I was just suggesting, I think it's not going to, this process, these processes go on for quite a long time in terms of fill deposit petitions, and I think that if I had an item that I'd brought back for reconsideration, and there was some quirk in the schedule where I wasn't able to speak to it and I wasn't here, that I would certainly appreciate it to have a chance to speak to it, given that it's not clear that it's, you know, that it's going to succeed. So I just thought it was a matter of basic courtesy, but I'm not going to move it if there's general condition, general idea that that's not necessary. I'm looking at that, I don't, the petition, for the previous petition had nowhere, it didn't come even close to meeting the standards of the new policy. So I'm not sure that these are not a zero-cost item. We spent time and effort on these and constantly repetitioning until someone gets the answer that they want. I'm not sure that we put neighbors through that. I don't really support soil deposit applications to begin with. So given that it was nowhere close to the standard of the new policy, I'm not sure what the logic is to just do it again, just because we have a new policy. But again, I think it'd be appropriate to give everyone a chance to vote on this one. Thank you.
Counselor Coontz?
I do recall that, that the original petitioning of the neighbors, that there was a postal strike, and that I don't believe that everybody actually got their information in a timely fashion so that they could make a, you know, an informed decision. So I would be in support of them repetitioning.
Yeah, and I, myself, I'm also supportive of us repetitioning. I think there was some issues potentially with the petition in the first place. We've changed, looked at the new policy, passed that tonight. And so I think it makes sense to repetition and see if they meet the new criteria or not, and from there will be clear where we head. So I'm happy to move on, and I think, you know, I can't speak for Counselor Froze, but you know, I think he was aware of what this was happening, and go from there. Or Mayor Froze. It's amazing what happens when you sit in this center chair. Mayor Froze.
You're never going to live that long, though.
Yeah, I know. It'll be there forever, but that's all right. Anyways, all right, so let's, we're on motion one, so I will call the vote on that. And it passes with Counselor Woodward and Counselor Davis opposed.
And Counselor Long? You're on other business? Counselor Long, oh, there we go. You're on.
Well, I'll read it, because that's the official way. So everybody does love a parade, well, they're supposed to anyway, and it's about parades. So whereas parades held in our township communities and hosted by community nonprofit groups have proven to be and to provide exemplary contribution towards building community spirit, promoting the values of our township, and supporting volunteerism. the values of our township and supporting volunteerism. And whereas the Township of Langley, council supports some of these parades with community grants. However, the cost of liability insurance and preparation of traffic management plans, which are mandatory requirements by the Township of Langley in order for a parade to be held, can far exceed the grants that we issue. In fact, in some cases, the demands and costs of the traffic management plan alone can be triple that of a maximum grant provided by the Township of Langley for a parade. So, therefore, be it resolved that, beginning 2019 and from now on, the Township of Langley council directs staff to facilitate the preparation and completion of any required traffic management plan and cover the cost of such a plan for parades that are to be held in the township, which are sanctioned by the council and in which council participates. And further, that the funding for this community initiative be directed from our council contingency fund." So, I so move.
Okay, Counselor Ferguson seconds. And Counselor Richter?
Okay. I have real problems with this motion because it is an open-ended cost. Uh, like, how much does it, a traffic management plan actually cost? How much staff time would have to go into prepare and complete these traffic management plans? Uh, the actual costs for the plans. And then there's that we're going to pay for all of this at a council contingency. Um, I'm actually quite shocked that Counselor Long didn't bother to raise this in the budget discussions because I see this as having a significant cost impact. So, um, I'll let everybody speak, uh, Mr. Mayor, but, uh, what I would really like to do is to refer this back to staff for cost estimate.
Counselor Long?
Pushing the button because I'm not sure at what point you allow me to speak. I'd rather, I guess, let council speak and then I could speak at the end or whatever.
Well, you can speak now and then you can speak again if you'd like.
Well, I'll wait, I'll wait for a couple more comments if you don't mind. Thanks.
Counselor Woodward?
This, is this, I mean, I'm trying to wonder if this is the spot where I just, yeah, I won't oppose it, but, um, because it's Counselor Long's motion. I'm amazed. Notice the motion, Counselor Long. I've been waiting for one for a while. This is the, this is the wrong one, though, because I generally support it. Um, and I'm going to start every motion of mine now with, whereas, everyone loves a great idea. Um, so, I think for me, though, I think that, um, you know, not just parades, we, we, you know, some of the, uh, burdens on some of these groups that can't really afford it to close the road has been increasing over the years. I know we've noticed that in Fort Langley, uh, with the significant road closure that we've been doing for every year for a number of years. There, there may be some ways to standardize some of this, such that if the parade's not changing year after year after year, similar to some of our events in Fort Langley, that, you know, you have one on file unless there's some reason to be concerned. There's not necessarily any reason to be resubmitting all this paperwork again every year. So, maybe there is some ways to, to streamline this and make it a little bit easier for some of these groups to, to, to get a road closure. So, you know, I'm not sure. I want to, you know, direct that, that now this township's going to be responsible for, for completing this on behalf of the groups, but I, I definitely support the intent. And, and I think maybe a referral for some, some other ideas, but I won't move that. But maybe some referral for a cost estimate and some other ideas from staff and potentially how this can be streamlined for some of these groups, for which it is quite a burden to, to complete an application for a road closure. And also, I won't do it right now, but I'd like to, to, to look at the vision where I, I am uncomfortable funding this from, uh, council contingency if this is something that we're going to be doing for groups and there's some cost associated with that. I'd like to know what that is before committing to fund it from council contingency. But again, I support the intent. Just not sure that, uh, I can agree to, to funding it until knowing what that amount is and what some of the implications are. But I, I definitely do want to address the issue of road closures and how they're challenging for some of these smaller community groups. And, and, you know, if you wanted to start a parade and grow an event and, and you, you sort of call in and get a list of all the stuff you have to do, it's kind of daunting. And I, and I'd like it to be easier and, uh, you know, not as expensive for some of these smaller groups to get new events going. So, I definitely do support this one. I look forward to your next notice of motion, Counselor Long.
Counselor Kunst?
Um, I would just actually like to know how many parades and, um, if going forward, you know, there's a parade that maybe we wouldn't want to, uh, to, uh, pay for. So, um, it, the open-ended whereas parades is, are there specific parades that are, you know, for the township or for, you know, um, Alder Grove, um, like specific communities? So, I don't know if, if it needs a little bit more, um, clarification.
Counselor Ferguson?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Acting Mayor Woodward. Uh, I wanted to ask, if I may, through the chair, to staff, you know, if, um, you know, the, I, I don't think anybody in this audience or listening would know the owners of challenges. If I was to, to put my kilt on and hire a piper and walk down by the, um...
No.
...library downstairs, how, how much would that cost me to do that, if I may?
Your Worship, the cost of kilts has been increasing recently. So, after thorough analysis, we spend some time, depends on cotton versus wool. Um, if you'd like to form a task force, we could probably look into that.
I guess, no, I'll ask another question. From what I understand, a legion, that's a Alder Grove Legion, you know, had a, uh, a legion parade where the veterans marched from about a block away to their, uh, detachment there or their building there in Alder Grove. I understand it cost them $7,000 to walk 100 paces or something. Is that correct?
Uh, thank you, Counselor Ferguson, for, uh, letting us respond. I think there's a distinction, though, between the individual who's exercising their, uh, charter rights and making a statement and someone who may be closing a road. If they're going to pursue a road closure for the event that you suggested, then, uh, we would say that the traffic management plan, the plan only, not implementation, not crossing, uh, personnel or, uh, or barriers, would be in the range of $2,000 to $3,000. So, say $2,500. Uh, we know historically that we see 10 to 12 parades a year. There's many other events, but they're not considered parades. We're talking about parades themselves, so it would be 10 to 12. Um, interestingly enough, as an observation, the council present grant policy does make reference for grants for events up to $2,500. One option to control the number, so council would have some review function, would be to simply create a new category as part of the grants policy, fund that, and then council could actually select which events or which, uh, yeah, which, uh, parades really meet the overall township criteria, uh, because there may be parades that we frankly can't think of at this point that may be objectionable to council.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. And I'll make sure I don't wear my kilt on those days.
Counselor Long?
It would be dependent whether you were full regiment or not when you were wearing your kilt. But, uh, so let me just, uh, address some of the concerns. First of all, this is a model resolution because there are three wherashes and two therefore be resolves. And it is only the therefore be resolved that council moves upon. So, even though there's mention of all kinds of parades and the wherashes and the therefore be resolved is specific to parades that, uh, that the township, uh, sanctions only. I appreciate all the input and I think that's information that we certainly will need. Um, I mean, I just want to emphasize the, the value in, in community spirit and volunteerism and everything else that goes into putting on a parade. And also highlight the, the difficulties that have happened over the years. Because many years ago, when I first got involved in civic life, we had a parade and it didn't cost us really anything because we didn't need a road permit and there were volunteers coming out of the woodwork that would help us with the marshaling and, and, uh, the execution of the parade and the safety, uh, factors. The, the RCMP used to volunteer, uh, staff, many staff from the municipalities of both the city and the township would volunteer. Those days, I'm afraid, have gone. And now the cost of putting on a parade are extremely expensive. And the traffic management plan is a big driver because of the safety that's required in the community and the, and the township's, um, requirement that those safety issues be addressed properly. So, the cost is huge. And the grants that we used to get for parades would pay for bands, marching bands, cadets, jugglers, clowns, things that make a parade a lot of fun. And unfortunately, there's no money left over for that when you have to purchase a, a traffic management plan. So, I'm glad that we're discussing it and I'm, I'm happy to get some more, uh, information from, from staff that would make comfortable, uh, council more comfortable. But the fact about the council contingency, and I like the idea maybe of a special grant thing, but it is some, it is sort of something that the council usually sanctions, usually walks in the parade. It's something that we do. And I've always considered that contingency fund being something that council uses to spend on the community as it sees fit. So, I didn't want to suggest a parade category or a new grant category or a new burden on taxpayers either. We have about $120,000, I think, in that fund every year, and I don't remember ever expending all of it in the time I've been on council. But anyway, this can certainly come back in the report that it sounds like we're heading towards. But I won't, um, uh, underestimate the value, I believe, of the community spirit and contribution to the community from a parade and the huge amount of cost and effort that goes into it. Many communities, uh, it's sponsored by the municipality to begin with, in the tens of thousands of dollars. Here, we have community groups that are stepping up and doing all this work, all this volunteerism, families participating, all kinds of folks, uh, getting involved and having a lot of fun with the community at a fraction of the cost. And I think the best we could do is at least help them make sure that the traffic plan is done so that the community's kept safe. So, I'm happy.
Counselor Richter?
I'd like to, um, refer this motion to staff for a report on, um, all of the questions that have been raised here, including the suggestion about creating another grants category. And I also think that consideration should be given to, um, issues like we've already run into with this council in terms of things like flying flags. So, there are a lot of considerations in this, and I don't think it should be, uh, a completely open-ended door. Then anybody that wants to have a parade, we're going to pay for it. So, I'll make that referral to staff for a report.
Okay, is there a seconder for that?
I'll second that.
Okay, Counselor Woodward seconded. So, I'll clear the queue and then we'll open it up to those who'd like to speak to the referral. Counselor Woodward?
Yeah, so I was going to suggest, uh, potentially a referral as well, but I wasn't going to move it. I can't believe I'm saying this unless Counselor Long agreed with it. Um, because I want to definitely work, work, work with you on this one because I would like to maybe expand the scope. So, for example, in the Fort Langley BIA for five years ago, five years, five, six years ago, putting on the Cranberry Festival with a relatively significant road closure, you know, that wasn't really a lot of work, didn't really cost us any money. We're getting a, you know, they get a $5,000 community grant to put on that festival. And now, actually, more and more every year, it's getting consumed by some of these requirements. So, I actually really appreciate the suggestion regarding potentially combining this with the, with the grant program. So, maybe, I don't know if we amend the referral or if it's a friendly amendment, to maybe have it come back as part of the community grant program or the report that's coming up for the spring, to maybe look at making this part of the community grants. But I don't know if Counselor Richter would consider that friendly or not, but specifically tying it to coming back with the community grant program in a, in a month or so.
Not by the grant.
And then look at it in that context.
Uh, oh, sorry. Counselor Richter, did you?
Yeah, and I just wanted to say council contingency is money that we never know when we're going to need it or what we're going to need it for. But already tonight, we've had a discussion about paying out $42,800 to cover the, uh, GVRD, um, uh, DCC levy in order to get a hospice here in the community. I would think keeping money aside in our council contingency so we could do that if we need to is probably more important than picking up the tab for every parade that someone wants to do.
Now, this, this, uh, this, uh, report back from staff could include different sort of funding options. Wouldn't have to be restricted to community grant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Well, oh, Counselor Long?
Thank you, and I'll support the referral, but I want to repeat that it's been said several times from over there that this is annual parade. It's very specific in the, in the motion that these are parades that are sanctioned by this council.
Yeah, but it's not specific how many there are.
Okay. All right, we'll call the question on referral. J1. And it passes unanimously. Is there any other business?
Your Worship, just a reminder, there were some delegations this afternoon. Council may choose to, uh, deal with them or not deal with them, but it's just to make sure it's not inadvertently overlooked.
Oh, yes.
Two, the slow pitch. Uh, so E1 and E2. Um, maybe I'll move that they be referred to staff.
Second.
For whatever. And refer them both to staff as, as, uh, both together as one motion?
Yeah, both delegations be referred. No, you want them separate?
Okay.
Okay, let's do it separate. I'll, I'll, yeah.
Let's do one at a time. We'll move, E1?
E1, which is a, the presentation, uh, from the slow pitch, that, that be referred to staff for comment and we, and a report.
Okay. Do we have a seconder? Counselor Kunst, all's in favor?
We're doing this? Okay.
Okay, we're just, okay, that's referred to staff. Thank you. And E2? Anyone?
With, with staff?
Okay, Counselor Ferguson, do we have a seconder? Counselor Long? Okay, I guess we'll do a vote on this one.
E2, can we turn?
This is E2. Um, this is the, Mr. Baines, who...
It's a refer to staff.
Refer to staff for report.
I mean, I don't want to condone anything.
Yep. Okay, so this is E2. Referral and vote. And that, uh, carries with Counselor Richter and Counselor Arneson opposed. Is there any other business? Counselor Richter?
I'd like to, uh, ask what exactly we are referring about Mr. Baines' delegation to staff to do. Are we asking them to lift the no covenant?
Goodness, no. I was very specific, Mr. Acting Chair, that we refer the issue to staff for report, that we're not condoning anything at all, but we need to find out what, what happened there and what can or can't be done.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other business?
Termination.
Termination. Counselor Davis in a second here. Counselor Kunst, and all those in favor? All right, we will take a short recess while we get set up for public hearing.